Get a reaction.
So at least there's some of the changes.
Uh, no, that's the PDI.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is this PDI standard?
Yeah, exactly.
What was the sample?
I don't remember. But it's an organization that was hired by the Housing Coalition and the Regional Collaborate Collaborations, whatever it was, to review all of the 16 or so towns in the valley and determine what aspects of the various town regulations and zoning ordinances are thwarting efforts to allow workforce housing.
Are thwarting?
Yes, so their study was to determine-
Who's financing this?
The Housing Coalition and the Regional something other-
So your daughter is carousing around?
So Scott's a member of the Regional Collaborative Group. And so he wanted this brought forward to the planning board. So they're analyzing these towns for what, um, what impediments there are. So Jackson, for example, has this great workforce housing ordinance, but we also have boulders and steep slopes.
Oh.
Right, it's called paying lip service to the idea.
Well, I mean, the thought was there that it could work, you know, when Mike Mallett reviewed it and he said, "This is pretty good, this could work." But I talked with him the other day and he was saying, you know, "I just, I'm not in the spec housing development business," and not many people are.
No, they're not. The economy sucks.
There's not much profit in it either.
Yep.
That's what it boils down to.
Yep.
Larry Seaver is not coming.
Larry Seaver is not coming? Sarah, I've brought you a flash drive, but I did email you all the stuff.
Did you?
Yeah.
Today?
A week or so ago, and then I re emailed it today.
Okay, is that it?
But I'm going away for the weekend, so I'll give you this flash drive and-
Whoa! I can hand it over, you know, you don't have to throw things.
Whoosh! Shows I'm strong, maybe I should have been a basketball player like him.
I'm flashing.
Flash drive, I can.
Have you ever seen in the M&amp;M Assurance Building, when you first walk in, there's a wonderful framed big thing, and it's this photograph of a man with his raincoat open, and it says, "Expose yourself to art."
Yeah.
Yes.
That's one of them. Shannon, do I?
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they had a big door.
I love that.
John, just as a heads up, I heard the N-E News and stuff, I have a conference call, so I'm not here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
All right, I would like to call the meeting to order so that all of our conversation will go on record.
I'll second that.
Now we'll have the roll call.
Uh, yes. Darren Levitt.
Here.
Dick Bennett.
I am here.
B Davis.
Here.
Sarah Kimble.
Here.
John Allen.
Accounted for.
And Betsy Harding. Here.
All right.
All right.
So we will all vote on all issues, and that there are only six of us here. Um, public comment. Oh, no, minutes. Let's be cruisin' minutes. How they lookin', sports fans?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I can second it, but I wasn't there.
Yeah, same.
All second. All in favor of approving? Any opposed? We've got the minutes. Public comment. I was just gonna add something that I didn't get on the agenda. I've gotten some very interesting material on the future of water quality, not just locally, but nationwide, and how important water is going to become, and who's buying up water rights. I think we're all aware of the whole to-do in Freiburg with-
Nestle.
Nestle buying, or, well, taking quite a bit of water out of the aquifer there. So it's certainly something for us to look to in the future to try to preserve our water qualities because it wouldn't be good to have the ad, "Oh, Jackson, it's a great place to visit, don't drink the water." So I think it's something we should add into the master plan in some wording. And I'll bring, I didn't bring it tonight as usual, I didn't bring any stuff, but I will get some, it's pretty technical, and I'm gonna try to condense it into usable words. Any other public comment, or comment from the public, or anything not on the agenda? Okay, keep it down back there.
Sorry.
I've lost the letter. No, I put it down there. Did you get a letter from Burr Phillips?
No.
You had it.
I had it.
I had it right there, you lost it.
Hawkeye's.
That one?
I think Dick found it. Did you find it?
No.
No. I don't think I'm guilty.
No, I, if, if it's here, I put it-
In a pile?
Here. And if it's not here, then I've hidden it on myself because I know I brought it this time.
I got nothing out of it?
I've hidden it on myself.
Very effective.
So should I read it or just hand it in?
Well, read it. I think there was a question about stuff, so-
Uh, Dick called about this a couple days ago, and meeting, I'll try to clarify. The state reviews the design for compliance with state septic and subdivision regulations. They also inspect the installed system prior to it being backfilled. The town, me, on behalf of, does a couple things. One, review the design for compliance with the town's zoning ordinance. A few topics include verifying that the lot is large enough to support the proposed number of bedrooms or commercial flow per the town's lot sizing standards, which are different from the state's. Verifying that the house building layout is not within the building setbacks, verifying that the leach bed is far enough from perennial streams, since the town's standards are more restrictive than the state. Two, make a site visit to verify the plans actually match the existing conditions and that the layout markers are set. Some examples of things that I have found that were not shown on the design plan include an intermittent stream and wetlands flagging at the proposed leach bed site, wetlands within 10 feet of the test pit, where the test pit indicated no groundwater within 10 feet of the surface, a well on the abutting property not immediately next to the proposed leach bed location, but, oh, but immediately next to the proposed leach bed. One lot over. Note that the state does not review the site prior to construction, so this is the only check of the plan's accuracy with respect to the existing conditions. Summarize, the state, the state reviews for compliance with the state regs, plus inspects the installed system. I check the accuracy of topographic mapping and I review for compliance with the town's regulation. Hope this helps. Burr Phillips.
Great, so shall I type that whole thing into the minutes? Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think we should-
Great.
-get that down, because that answers the question from a resident that was concerned about the whole Burr Phillips, and, you know, just what it is that he does, so there it is.
Great, thanks.
As little a nutshell as I could get. Okay, then I have the discussion of the Shippee property. It's up Route 16. They're trying, they have, I think, 40 acres. Charlie Russo had started a subdivision, I think four lots and common land, but then sold it to these folks. They've held it since 92 or 93, and have gotten to the point now that they would like to do something with at least part of it, but have run into a bump with the building inspector because the subdivision was never approved. I researched that and a number of names came up that I recognized. The folks have a hard time with completing the road specs at this time. They want to sell one lot. It seems to me that they could sell one lot. You say no, okay. What is your no?
Because they didn't get approval.
No, no. You've got 40 acres of land. You bring a surveyor in, he's gonna cut out five acres. It has the road frontage requirement. They're gonna put in a private driveway. What is the problem?
It's supposed to go through subdivision.
Why?
But you have to.
Because you're dividing a lot.
Can I?
Yeah, no, that's, that's why I brought this-
I was a selectman. They called me and wanted to, so I talked to Charlie Russo. He said that it was never approved. So I don't think you can do that without approval, can you?
If you're gonna have, if you, it's one lot now, 40 acre lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you're going to make it into two lots, that's a subdivision.
Okay.
So to get a subdivision, you have to go through the subdivision application, get approval?
Okay. But they don't have to have a town spec road.
If, if both lots have frontage, they don't need any road, road at all?
Right.
They need a driveway?
No, they have a driveway, but the driveway is however they-
They already had, they already had that.
They have a driveway, and what I, my suggestion to them is keep the right of way, sell the one lot. It has road frontage, 200 feet on Route 16.
How many feet does the whole 40 acre?
1,200, I believe.
So they have, they can carve off a lot and just make sure that both lots have the required frontage.
You can.
And they're good, there you go.
That's what I thought, but I don't want to bring that to them, and they called me directly.
And that's gonna go ad lisp, right?
That is, I said also that this is, for 500 feet is commercial zoning.
Yeah, so they need, they need 150 feet, not 200.
So they need 150 feet, and so what I think they would do is go from this point to here, and then they would have 200, 200.26 feet of road frontage. Keep the right of way for the future.
Right.
Then if they have the money from this lot, and they want to develop this right of way, and then they can sell three more lots.
Well, when you say right of way, you think, is it right, is that going through the new lot?
I believe it's going next to it.
What's this for? This approval of health ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, it-
Is that for septic?
Yeah. There was, there's supposed to be a septic. Uh, this is, as you go north on Route 16, I think it's just-
By the TNC?
North of the-
No, it isn't.
Sign, what is the big sign?
Is it near the-
The TNC?
Yes.
Town and Country?
Yeah, it's right here, there is a TNC sign right there.
Yep.
Yep.
Town and Country.
Yep. Okay.
So it's beyond the Town and Country sign, on the right, there is a steel gate now.
I know that one exactly.
Okay, so you know where you're going.
Yeah. I saw that the other day, I was wondering where that was.
And now it has a real estate sign from Black Bear-
Right.
-Realty, who I invited to the meeting so that they would not be dispensing false information to their customer, and I never got a call back, so.
But I think it's pretty straightforward, like Sarah said, if you're gonna do anything, you have to do a subdivision approval.
They would have to get it surveyed and have that subdivision brought to us.
For whatever they do, if it's one lot or two lots, doesn't matter.
That's what I said, they have to-
Well, it is, because the original subdivision of four lots was turned down because they did not complete this road to town.
They expanded it, but they never-
They received, they received conditional approval?
No.
Oh, so there wasn't-
They had conditional approval. I saw that.
Well, they must have, you're saying, if that was a condition-
And then, for a number of years, they paid taxes on four lots. And then it came to the attention of the town that the approval never was finalized. Then they started getting one tax bill for the whole thing. So at some time, it became obvious that the subdivision didn't go through the approval, but it was that close, I mean-
Yeah.
We're stamped up here. It was pretty close. There was a septic. Now, on their real estate thing, it says, "Leach field existing on site septic exists."
How can it?
I can't believe that there is. If it is, it's so grown in, it's not applicable.
It's not usable, huh?
So I don't know why they, and where that information would have come from, but-
Well, then, the note here, if you read number four, it says here, "This subdivision is submitted for approval under the cluster development provisions of the town of Jackson, New Hampshire." So it says it's submitted for approval, hasn't been approved.
Right.
Yeah. It doesn't say, it doesn't say it has contingent approval or anything like that.
Okay, so there's a retaining wall that was put in because the slope, it gave the sightline, you had the 200 feet sightlines and a driveway-
This is all from 30 years ago, right? 1999.
So that was created, there is a retaining wall there. It's kind of grown in now, but, I mean, that gave them the minimum sightlines to use that as a driveway. So a lot of it was done, and then it didn't come to fruitation, and then Russo sold it to these folks, these folks have held it now for a good long time, and now, I think, if they wanted to sell that one lot with enough road frontage to qualify, use this as their driveway at this time, keep-
Is there actually a structure on one of the lots now?
No.
No structures. Then they could take the money that they might realize from this sale, and then, you know, do the road, or make arrangements with the other, if they wanted to go on, and then it wouldn't, because you can do two dwelling units on a driveway.
Right.
In Jackson. So if they wanted to just stick with two building lots-
They might want to be informed of that, though.
Well, that, I wanted to bring it to the table here first, to hear everybody's opinion
Well, I think they, but, it's obvious if they want to carve a lot off, they have to have the subdivision approval.
Yep.
So they have to bring a plan in, and so until we see what their plan is, really isn't too much we can discuss.
Well, I'm gonna suggest they go back to Bergeron, who did this one, and just say, "Okay, you've got most of the points." They've, they've got a New Hampshire Highway Department marker, I mean, they've got enough points.
Done, done a lot of the-
Right, they can get it done pretty cheaply.
I would say to them is go back to Bergeron, whoever it is, and say, "All right, what is it you want to do? What's your end result?" And have them present the plans, you can just come here and they can do it in two stages. One is just do an immediate lot now, and then have a backup plan, or they can do the whole thing.
To have-
It's their choice, but we can't say anything, we know there's enough to do something, but they have to bring it to us, show us everything.
Oh, absolutely, but I just wanted to steer them towards-
My question, if they abandon the idea of having a cluster development there, and they make it into individual lots, are they gonna forfeit any opportunity to make it into clusters that they want to in the future?
It depends on, okay, so they've got 40 acres. If they're gonna carve off-
Some of it's pretty steep.
-four lots and keep some common land, they certainly have enough, each lot has enough area to, you know, satisfy any of the town regulations.
I didn't know if there was something difference between a regular subdivision versus a cluster development.
Or a PUD.
Or a PUD.
Yeah, planned unit development-
Right.
-has that common land.
Right, I think-
Whether they choose to stick with that or not is their caution.
I didn't know, once they, once they went into a regular subdivision, are they gonna forfeit any possibility of going into that?
Like you're saying, if they do a driveway and there's only two houses versus doing a road for a lot, three lots.
Right. Are they gonna be able to go back to that if they-
I think that whenever they want to create a town spec road to a cul-de-sac, they can have the other three lots, or maybe even four lots in there.
I just think it's pretty straightforward to just go to the engineer and say, "What can we do here? What's our options?"
Yeah, yeah, that's what I would say.
You know, they have the drawings and see it, and this, you know, this steepness, it's pretty, you know, we know something can be done, we're just not sure of the possibilities.
Right, and, and that's, so I'm gonna suggest they not listen to real estate agents, but listen to engineers.
What's the date of those plans?
89, did you say?
Yeah, I think this one is-
There's a stamp on it there.
Is one just below the?
There's 89 here, there's a stamp.
Yeah, 489.
What's the circular one down there?
Hudson Trail?
Yeah, Hudson Trail. Is it one that just-
No date. Uh, March of 89 for the plan.
Cut some up, beginning of a road at one point.
Some of that.
Just remember that being somewhat open.
Well, it used to be all, well, open, but they did something.
So it's grown back?
New Hampshire Water Supply received it on the 18th of April, 89. That was all from Russo.
And they called, and they called, they said they had approval. Well, I didn't think they did, so I asked John, but they told me that they had, and I had it.
Did they give us, give you the drawing?
This came from the office.
Okay.
Here, file.
This is on file. This is what the real estate people had. And I feel comfortable talking with them to put them on the road to something they can do. And I remember the discussion too, because I remember the name. I was, someplace I was, I talked to them or something, I can't remember.
I told them I had to get something, you know, but just couldn't get approval because of what they-
And even now, since nothing's been done on it.
Right.
A little of lapses, huh?
Well, it wasn't approved anyway, so.
It's conditionally approved.
Well, it says it was submitted, it says it was submitted for approval is all it says on the draw, there's no saying it was approved with conditions.
Okay, we got a building permit for Charlie Russo to put up a sign.
Looks like an old one, huh? Holy cow! Wow! Ross signed it.
Ross, you're open. I have a septic plan.
So are you looking up how long an approval is good for, Sarah? Are you looking up how long an approval is good for?
I'm just trying to remember where, where the-
I think it's one year and it can be extended for a year.
A building permit.
Building permit.
No.
But isn't it also the same for approval?
I don't think so.
No, I think it's different.
Yeah, because you can get something approved and not build on it, as long as, but- Just if you have a building permit, you have a year to do something.
Yeah, then you have to get an extension.
So I have approval for construction of a three-bedroom septic system. Arthur Dusset, sanitary inspector.
Well, that's old. Holy, man.
Yeah, that's- Oh, that's October 78. I don't think that was constructed. So then we have-
Maybe that's where they got the listing for it, though.
Yeah. These are just letters. B Davis, look, that letter. Where is this? Betsy Harding sent a letter here.
It was to make it go, huh?
Imagine that.
Subdivider improvement agreement. Oh, that was with the banks and the- Subdivider improvement agreement. Oh, that was with the banks and the, there was bonding and banks and... There was a lot going on here. Anyway, here it is. I think that it's doable for them...
They just have to start, start afresh.
And get them going with the Bergeron, whoever they choose. I would go to Bergeron because they've got a lot of the information already, but... Free choice.
Technology was different back then.
They have... I'm not sure if they did.
Okay, now we, I'd like to move, everybody had their say on that. A discussion about a draft report distributed by the selectmen's office.
Okay, that's the PDI stuff, so that's that horizontally, you know, the landscape design sheet.
Is that this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was Scott... It was Scott that asked that we distribute that for discussion, but I'm sorry that he's not here today.
Who produced this?
So Scott's on a group called the Regional Collaboration, something or other. And in concert with the Housing Coalition for Mount Washington Valley, the two organizations put together enough money to be able to hire a group called, I think, PDI. And they analyzed the sixteen or so towns in the valley to determine what parts of our various ordinances might thwart attempts to make lower-cost housing be available. So they analyzed the zoning ordinances of all the towns. So Scott wanted us, as I understand it, to review and determine, is this correct for Jackson at this time? There was one change that we made at the, that the voters put in, that's section nine point eight or whatever it was, yeah, one's, one or more state-approved septic system designs sufficient. So that's the only thing I think that's different. They say... Maybe they've corrected it. The lot must be large enough for two dwelling units based on the soils-based lot sizing standard.
Is that the case?
I'm just wondering, is that true?
I think it is. I thought it was just they had to be able to, the septic had to be...
I don't think you can have two septics on a lot.
Right, the septic, the presence system had to be able to accommodate.
Exactly.
That's what I thought.
Accessories, after, you can't have two lots, because you can't, because you forfeit the right to subdivide your lot when you get, you agree to accessory apartment.
Right.
Okay, it does say, section nine point two, the lot on which each accessory, on which the accessory apartment is proposed is of sufficient size to accommodate at least two dwelling units according to the requirement of section six. So I guess it is, that's what we said.
Okay, here's one of the things for cluster developments, no internal setbacks apply.
Yeah, that's true.
So in a cluster, you don't have the 25-foot offset from the sidelines.
From the butter?
Right.
I thought there was an issue...
Not the butter, it's the individual side, right?
From the, whatever the...
From the, from the owner next to you.
I thought it was just if you, the house next to you, if you did two. Because I thought it was...
It's from the lot line.
There's no minimum?
Right.
I thought there was an issue with an overhanging entranceway to a front door that was encroaching on some, somebody's lot. I remember that. Do you remember that one?
It says in section eight point three point two...
We had an issue with that with Selectman.
And didn't, but was that a cluster development?
That's Eagle Brook. Was that Eagle Brook?
At section eight point three point two, there shall be no internal setbacks or setback requirements for attached or detached residential units within the parcel to be subdivided. However, the existing setback requirements described in sections four and five of this zoning ordinance shall apply to the entire parcel.
Yes, it says internal setbacks, so what I hear that is inside, you can have houses, make sure that the lot line, the setbacks, that still apply.
So that's what allows duplexes to be...
Right, the external...
Yeah, so you said, I heard the word a butter, I'm thinking of a different lando.
Okay, yes.
Versus...
Outside of the cluster.
Yes.
But you can have a duplex or a fourplex or whatever, and no problem.
I thought it turns down a building permit for that, because it was within 25 feet of the lot line.
It was a cluster?
At Eagle Brook. Several years ago.
And then I think one of the more important pages is on essentially page three of our page. It's labeled page twenty-seven on theirs. When Carol was with us, she was recommending that we have a part of town, you know, the, if we didn't want to have intensive development going up Route sixteen because of the steep slope and the water table and so on, that we might label a section of town that would allow more intensive development. For example, one of the things we discussed was having a zoning ordinance proposal for next year that would allow places like Christmas Farm Inn or Eagle Mountain House to become not, no longer non-conforming. So we, we might figure a way to have the Route sixteen B, for example, permit hotels or things like that. And so that's what actually shows up, that's what this PDI group is also recommending. They do it a little bit differently. They don't have the connection between Black Mountain Road and Carte de Nacho Road. But they are recommending that we permit some more intensive development if we're interested.
Well, we'd have to work really hard on the wording of it, because to make it palatable for the town.
Exactly.
I think we'd have to be really careful in constructing what we said. I hear the idea of not having Eagle and, you know, Christmas Farm Inn as non-conforming businesses. That would allow them a little more latitude in developing their properties, but...
Yeah, we might not want a 7-Eleven up there. I mean, not that they would ever propose one.
No, that's why I said, we'd have to be really careful how we crafted that language.
For sure.
But, you know, it'd be something else to work on.
And we had discussed that after the master plan gets done, that we might consider making some more extensive revisions to the, or proposals to, for the zoning ordinance, so that... And, you know, none of this is written in stone, it's just what their recommendations are that we look at.
John, have you seen this before? It says here, comes from your office.
Well, that was my mistake.
Oh, okay.
I, I meant that they'd be distributing it at this meeting.
And you know another thing too, is you've lost your last gas station.
Yeah.
So...
Not even...
It used to have five, so I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You don't want to ruin that.
Not even, not only viable.
What? What did you say that's?
Oh, not economically viable, was what Donny Chase was saying, that, you know, in order for him to stay open as a gas station, you'd have to have made too many improvements that were too expensive.
Well, that was because of the tanks in the ground.
He had to redo the tanks in the ground. He was at that 20-year cutoff, and there was, I think, federal money available to haul them, and he said, "Now's the time to take it." Advantage of that, because at least he got them out of the ground.
Yeah.
At a reasonable price for himself. I don't think that is, does he have five years to go back in business, save?
Oh, yeah, six, maybe, I think our ordinance is six.
Six years to go back in business.
Yeah.
Other than that, then we'd be without a gas station in Jackson, so we'd have to make some kind of...
Where's that written, it's six years?
Non-conforming, this is written, right at the very beginning of our zoning ordinance.
Like if your business burned down, you have six years to rebuild it.
And that's really unusual. Most towns have one year or one and a half years or something. We discussed reducing it from six years, but decided to keep it that way.
Well, I just thought I'd throw that out.
Yeah, oh, no, I, I think that it's something to really think about, because it's a cer, you know, it's a service.
That's what I'm saying, you know, it's a business.
Right, but I mean, it really, yeah, tires, that change of oil, that, you know, got you started and, and, but, yeah, so...
And then also page sixteen, which is the, is it the last page? Not quite, but page sixteen is thirty-seven there, so it's pretty helpful to us with general review of our, the commercial zoning that we have, the signs, the farm allowable stuff, whatever.
Okay, now, but that has nothing to do with worker housing?
No, no, this group, you know, they, they were analyzing zoning ordinances of all sixteen towns with the idea that they've made recommendations for towns in the future in their next zoning ordinance. And I think the idea is that there will then be some valley-wide meetings where planning board members are encouraged to attend and discuss, you know, what aspects of zoning they don't understand or have questions about, or want to see changed, or whatever, with some presenters who are pretty savvy about zoning.
Okay, so this is, it seems to be focused on development, so who are they? That's what, I really need to know now who these people are. PDI?
It's Planned Decisions Incorporated, something like that.
And where are they out of?
Oh, maybe Portland or something. They're not from here. But they were chosen, so this Regional Collaboration Group that Scott's a member of is comprised of people from the sixteen or so towns who want to see that we're properly addressing economic issues and housing issues in the valley in ways that are beneficial to the population.
I have a silly question, reading this, it says in the middle of this paragraph, "Permit eating establishments in village district." So is that not something that's not allowed right now? Is it non-conforming? That seems weird.
I don't understand that one either, because we don't allow takeout food, but we allow...
So I don't, so is that what they're saying, when they say eating establishments? Because we have restaurants, and that's lodging, and there you have that allowed.
What page are you on?
It's right here.
Yeah, I wish Scott were here, because he would maybe know more of what they're going for. But we definitely permit restaurants, so why don't I at least highlight that and say, we don't understand, we permit restaurants.
What's the definition of an eating establishment?
Right.
It talks about shared parking provisions. I mean, a lot of these things, I think, it's kind of like they, they wrote this stuff without ever coming to the town. Like, like it doesn't apply to Jackson, like...
Obviously from away.
Yeah.
Food trucks?
Love them.
I do too. Hot dog.
Yes, yeah.
Well, maybe, why don't we delay this until next month, when Scott might be here? But in the interim, you might just look it over and see if you have any ideas.
Hmm, sure.
This report is in draft form now, and it will be distributed publicly in September, is the plan I believe.
It says here, like, "Allow farm stands to sell goods not produced on site." We already basically allowed that.
Yeah, we have the farmers market Saturday all summer.
Now, are these people still around? Are they going to come in? Are they going to talk to the planning board? Are they going to talk to the selectmen? Are they going to, they're just going to make these decisions on their own?
Well, there are no decisions. I mean, they have no...
This is, this is recommendations.
Well, they are, every, everything they do is a decision.
Yeah, but that has no, they have no authority, no regulations.
We have all the authority.
Recommendations, suggestions?
Yeah.
I'm just...
But I'm just wondering if there was any dialogue with them.
Right.
You know, are they...
Well, you said they were going to have, like, an open meeting for all the planning boards at some point.
Yeah, they'll have public meetings.
Okay.
I'm just bouncing, bouncing around here, Betsy, for a second, and going back to your map here, you're talking about Tara Bamford, and talking about next year, and I think, I remember we discussed, you know, those businesses that are non-conforming that are existing, and I just don't, I think it's such a difficult thing to wrap your arms around, to make them conforming, you know, it's...
Well, I don't know if making things conforming should be our major goal, but we should consider what it is we want. You know, do we want to have the village district go all the way up Route sixteen, even through some of the areas that are really not very developable? Or do we want to set up a, a district that really is developable, if there's enough land, which there's not much of? It's just something to consider.
Well, I was just saying, dressing, you were saying about non-conforming businesses. Is that what you're, that's what you're saying is the answer?
Well, it's one of the things to consider, you know, if we are going to be redesigning our zoning ordinance or proposing that it be redesigned in some way, do we want to, you know, one of the things Tara talked about, I think, was having a village district and a rural commercial district that could go up Route sixteen and having a...
Well, it is commercial.
Right, but we're labeled village district, and it's not a village, it's just, it's rural, commercial, maybe, or rural something. And then a rural residential and maybe rural mixed use, or I don't know what label we might have, but, so that we'd allow, we'd have maybe four districts instead of just two. Just something to discuss, to see if we are happy with what we have, or if we want to change it the way Tara was proposing that we might consider.
I think we had on the survey a question about whether we wanted to, whether anyone was interested in expanding the number of areas that businesses are allowed, and I don't think there was very much...
Wasn't a lot of positive feedback on it?
No.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go with this thing. The, the, the way it's set up now is pretty straightforward and easy to understand and to follow.
It's there.
Yeah, well, I'm saying it's, it's...
Right, 500 feet to the side of Route sixteen, village.
Yeah, I think people bought land and Route sixteen is commercial, that's, you're devaluing when they bought it. You're going to say, oh, that's a lot.
That's one of the things I'm going to tell the shippers, that they are in a commercial zone, so if they want to...
I just think it becomes very complicated, you have all these, like, you know, different areas and rules. We, I think it's pretty straightforward now what it is, and there's not like, there's people coming and their demand or asking to develop businesses, then, because where it's located, it's not allowed.
Yeah.
Maybe putting a cart before the horse, but...
Well, I think that's why... Well, I think that's why it got shut down so many times. I mean, there was in the past quite a push to rezone Route sixteen corridor.
Right.
And there was quite a pushback.
Well, and I think the reason was the confusion because it came through as not recommended by the planning board.
But, Betsy, if you're going to land there for fifty or sixty years, like, oh, too bad. Well, you're going to be residential now.
Well, that's the same way...
How do you value your land?
That's the same way when in seventy-one or whatever, seventy-three, the zoning ordinance got put into place. You know, people's land...
Well, I'm sorry, I think that's wrong. I'm going to devalue your land. I'm sorry.
Well, no, it, it isn't that it's right or wrong. I understand people voting their pocketbook on that issue.
Well, yeah.
And they would like to protect their investment.
Sure.
But nobody ever said that real estate was a sure thing. Nobody ever guaranteed you're going to make money out of it.
Well, I think more importantly, we sent out the questionnaire and the survey and no one really, there wasn't a consensus saying they wanted to look at changing it. And that's what we're talking about.
Nope. They didn't.
No, it's been tried.
That's what I said, it was quite a pushback.
Yeah.
To not change it.
Several times to change it.
Yeah, I think we did hash it out enough that we got a real... Because I remember one time it was all, the people didn't know what they were voting for. People knew what they were voting for and they voted it down. Okay. For further study?
Sure, let's discuss it when hopefully Scott will be here.
Well, if he's attended the meetings, he'd be a good source to...
Absolutely.
Seven fifty, progress on background reports.
Wow.
We are right on schedule.
You're a machine.
I have vested interest, I haven't eaten something.
Background reports. I went quick through the table of contents of the last master plan and people have sent me history, report, natural resources is done, John's administrative facility is down through solid waste is done, cemeteries are done, health services are done. So I, Betsy is still working on population and housing. And, Betsy, I also be down with the library and social services.
No, I'm not doing library, I think.
Well, that's what it was in the minutes from March media was, that's all.
Right when you had your background. Oh, that's right. You had the vice chairman, you got, and you were here to accept your decision.
I was surprised for you those minutes. Thought we were going to have nominating committee like we usually do and all of a sudden...
Okay, so Scott was taking over the cemeteries and I think library and social service, and he was doing cemeteries and health services.
Yeah, those, he's done and sent to me.
Okay. So I'm not sure about library, I'll check on that.
So, Betsy will update sections on population, housing, cemeteries, library, social service, all services. Okay, and Darren offered to work on employment and income section, how's it going?
I've got to work on that.
Excellent answer.
Thank you.
Excellent. I like the way you did that.
And Kathleen?
I did do some of the work on the employment. I've got a fair amount of that set, but one of the things I wanted us to consider is in prior years, we've put down information about the sales prices of housing units. And I don't know if it's just that we've had so much more real estate happening, but it's just huge. I used my camera to take photograph after photograph of the pages of information on land transactions from two thousand two to two thousand fourteen. And I just think it is not productive to be listing all of that sort of information. And so I went through to see what other towns do and they don't list, you know, the individual sales.
Yeah, because it's in the end of reports.
Yeah, I just, it makes so much more sense to end up with some analyses. You know, Freedom, for example, talks about rental affordability, sort of average, or the number of permits, building permits, sent out. And the town of Carroll, is this Carroll? Let's see, where is Carroll? Yeah, no, that's not it. Oh, the town of Carroll is actually just in the process of redoing their master plan. So it's interesting to see what they're coming up with compared to what we're doing. But, you know, they have this sort of chart about purchase prices of homes and rentals of homes. And I think that kind of thing is more useful.
Or like that?
Yeah.
Of course, I'm kind of favorable to graphs.
Well, here in this report, it says they just list the median value of the home in nineteen ninety and in two thousand, you have point A and point B.
Right, very basic.
This one's year to year.
So you have to pull your hair out, though. If you like the graphs. I like the summary.
Some of them are really well done, some of the master plans. You know, this is one for a town of Fitzwilliam, which is kind of the same size as Jackson's, pretty similar.
That's really good sense if you sent me the link on that.
Yeah.
So how is the medium value, median value established?
Median? You take all your whole set of numbers.
Yeah, okay.
And it's at the center.
It's the one in the middle.
Perfect.
Average is adding them all up and dividing it another...
Right.
If there's a hundred sales...
Yeah.
It's that one.
No, the same, my question was, was it based on the assessment?
That's what I had.
That was what I was, I was going to say, my question was the source, so it's based on the assessment? That's where we're using it?
Well, it could be on sales.
That's what I was, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, probably on sales makes more sense, right.
I don't know what the title of the graph is, or assessment or...
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I know what median is, I'm saying is, do you use the source of the sales of real estate that occurred?
I would imagine.
We're looking, I'm looking at median household...
Here's another one. There's a difference. You understand what I'm saying, is that value of, not an assessment, but a sale that occurred that year is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have age of homes, that's interesting. Thirty-three percent of the homes were made between nineteen, before nineteen forty. That's interesting. Respect your fire department, I would think.
So I would think that in the prior report, they used real estate transactions, right?
Right.
So then, so then, I guess as a group, we need to figure out, as going forward, are we going to use sales to use, if we chose to use the median value? Or, I think that is more accurate than an assessment?
Right.
Assessments have to be based on comps, though. So they have comparative values of what has sold in the neighborhood.
Right.
And that's how they, that's part of the formula.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, though, what is, what are we going to do, just use them?
What we probably... Also, the sale price, it limits the number of, if we do assessed value of houses. You're across the community. If you're...
I guess it's how you phrase it.
Sales, you're only a part of the community.
Right.
Right.
And also, you could have hardship sales, too, that would throw the hole. If you only have ten sales.
Well, I guess all how you phrase it is, this is the median price of the real estate sold, this is the median value of the...
Yeah, but if you only have five sales...
I understand that. I'm just saying is, we have to choose...
Right. I don't think sales would be appropriate because we may not have any sales in a given year, you know? Potentially.
Well, assessed value is supposed to be all based on the same scale, isn't it?
Yeah, but I bet you, you know, if you're, because of the area, you'd probably get more for a house than what's assessed at. And I would think in some areas, you probably wouldn't.
It depends, you're saying that where valuation is below, like eighty percent or something?
Right. I mean, I don't know what you use, like, what, did they say in there what they used? Yeah, this is purchase price. This one's rental.
Somebody who's purchased their house in nineteen seventy and has paid a different amount.
Right. I mean, if I bought my house from my relatives for twenty thousand dollars, that would be really accurate, you know, for my house.
Yeah, but I think you have to use sales.
Right, should be based on our land transactions.
And then the question would be, is, do you want to just do point A to point B? Do you want to, I don't think we should list every transaction, like, because they have no report listing each year.
Right, I think coming up with a graph would be helpful.
Okay, now we, I'd like to move, everybody had their say on that. A discussion about a draft report distributed by the Selectmen's Office.
Okay, that's the PDI now. So that's that horizontally, you know, the landscape is done.
Is that this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was Scott, it was Scott that asked that we distribute that for discussion. But I'm sorry that he's not here to...
Who produced this?
So Scott's on a group called the Regional Collaboration, something or other. And in concert with the Housing Coalition for Mount Washington Valley, the two organizations put together enough money to be able to hire a group called, I think, PDI. And they analyzed the sixteen or so towns in the valley to determine what parts of our various ordinances might thwart attempts to make lower-cost housing be available. So they analyzed the zoning ordinances of all the towns. So Scott wanted us, as I understand it, to review and determine, is this correct for Jackson at this time? There was one change that we made at the, that the voters put in, that's actually nine point eight or whatever it was, yeah, one or more state-approved septic system designs sufficient. So that's the only thing I think that's different. They say, maybe they've corrected it. The lot must be large enough for two dwelling units based on the soils-based lot sizing standard.
Is that the case?
I'm just wondering, is that true?
Look, it is. I thought it was just they had to be able to, you know, septic had to be...
I don't think you can have two septics on a lot.
Right, a septic, the present system had to be able to accommodate.
Exactly.
That's what I thought.
Accessories, you have to, you can't have two lots because you can't, because you forfeit the right to subdivide your lot when you get, you agree to accessory apartment.
Right.
Okay, it does say, section nine point two, the lot on which each accessory, on which the accessory apartment is proposed is of sufficient size to accommodate at least two dwelling units according to the requirement of section six. So I guess that is what we said.
Okay, here's one of the things for cluster developments, no internal setbacks apply.
Yeah, that's true.
So in the cluster, you don't have the twenty-five-foot offset from the sidelines.
From the butter?
Right.
I thought there was an issue...
Not for the butters, it's this individual aside, right?
From the, whatever the...
From the, from the owner next to you.
I thought it was just if you, the house next to you, if you did two. So I thought it's...
It's from the lot line.
There's no minimum?
Right.
I thought there was an issue with an over-hanging entranceway to a front door that was encroaching on some, somebody's lot. I remember that. You remember that one?
It says in section eight point three point two...
We had an issue with that with Selectmen.
And didn't, but was that a cluster development that's...
Eagle Brook.
At section eight point three point two, there shall be no internal setbacks or setback requirements for attached or detached residential units within the parcel to be subdivided. However, the existing setback requirements described in sections four and five of this zoning ordinance shall apply to the entire parcel.
Yeah, it says internal setbacks. So what I hear that is inside, you can have houses natured with a lot line, the setbacks that still apply.
So that's what allows duplexes to be extra long.
The external...
Yeah, so you said, I heard the word a butter, I'm thinking of a different landowner.
Okay, yes.
Versus...
Outside of the cluster.
Yes.
But you can have a duplex or a fourplex or whatever and no problem.
I thought it turns out a building permit for that, was it within twenty-five feet of the lot line?
It was a cluster?
At Eagle Brook, several years ago.
And then I think one of the more important pages is on essentially page three of our page. It's labeled page twenty-seven on theirs. When Carol was with us, she was recommending that we have a part of town, you know, that if we didn't want to have intensive development going up Route sixteen because of the steep slope and the water table and so on, that we might label a section of town that would allow more intensive development. For example, one of the things we discussed was having a zoning ordinance proposal for next year that would allow places like Christmas Farming or Eagle Mountain House to become not, no longer nonconforming. So we might figure a way to have the Route sixteen B, for example, permit hotels or things like that. And so that's what actually shows up. That's what this PDI group is also recommending. They do it a little bit differently. They don't have the connection between Black Mountain Road and Carton notch Road. But they are recommending that we permit some more intensive development if we're interested.
Well, we'd have to work really hard on the wording of it because to make it palatable for the town...
Exactly.
I think we'd have to be really careful in constructing what we said. I hear the idea of not having the Eagle and, you know, Christmas Farming as nonconforming businesses. That would allow them a little more latitude in developing their properties, but...
Yeah, we might not want a seven eleven up there. I mean, not that they would ever propose one.
No, that's what I said, we'd have to be really careful how we crafted that language.
For sure.
But, you know, it'd be something else to work on.
And we had discussed that after the master plan gets done, that we might consider making some more extensive revisions to the... And we had discussed that after the master plan gets done, that we might consider making some more extensive revisions to the, or proposals to, for the zoning ordinance, so that. And, you know, none of this is written in stone. It's just what their recommendations are that we look at.
John, have you seen this before? It says here, comes from your office.
Well, that was my mistake.
Oh, okay.
I, I meant that they'd be distributing it at this meeting.
And you know another thing too, is your garage is your last gas station.
Yep.
So.
Not economically viable.
So I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You don't wanna ruin that.
Not economically viable.
What? What did you say that's?
Oh, not economically viable was what Donny Chase was saying, that, you know, in order for him to stay open as a gas station, you'd have to have made too many improvements that were too expensive.
Well, that was because of the tanks in the ground.
He had to redo the tanks in the ground. He was at that twenty-year cutoff and there was, I think, federal money available to haul them. And he said, now's the time to take advantage of that because at least he got them out of the ground.
Yep.
At a reasonable price for himself. I don't think that is, does he have five years? To go back in business, save.
Oh, yep, six maybe. I think our ordinance says six.
Six years to go back in business.
Yeah.
Other than that, then we'd be without a gas station in Jackson, so we'd have to make some kind of.
Where is that written in, six years?
Non-conforming, this is written in the very beginning of Arizona ordinance.
Like if your business burned down, you'll have six years to rebuild it.
And that's really unusual. Most towns have one year or one and a half years or something. We discussed reducing it from six years, but decided to keep it that way.
Well, I just thought I'd throw that out.
Yeah, oh, no, I, I think that it's something to really think about because it's a ser, you know, it's a service.
That's what I'm saying, you know, it's a business.
Right, but I mean, it really, yeah, tires that change a little, you know, got you started and, and.
And then also page sixteen, which is the, is it the last page? Not quite. Page sixteen of thirty-two in their report. Pretty helpful to us with general review of our the commercial zoning that we have, the signs, the farm allowable stuff, whatever.
Okay, now, but that has nothing to do with worker.
No, no, this group, you know, they, they were analyzing zoning ordinances of all sixteen towns with the idea that they've made recommendations for towns in their next zoning ordinance. And I think the idea is that there will then be some valley-wide meetings where planning board members are encouraged to attend and discuss, you know, what aspects of zoning they don't understand or have questions about or want to see changed or whatever. With some presenters who are pretty savvy about zoning.
Okay, so this is, it seems to be focused on development, so. Who are they? That's what I, I really need to know now who these people are. PDI?
Is Planned Decisions Incorporated, something like that.
And where are they out of?
Oh, maybe Portland or something. They're not from here. But they were chosen, so this Regional Collaboration Group that Scott's a member of is comprised of people from the sixteen or so towns who want to see that we're properly addressing economic issues and housing issues in the valley in ways that are beneficial to the population.
I have a silly question. Reading this, it says in the middle of this paragraph, permit eating establishments in village district. So is that not something that's not allowed right now? Is that non-conforming? That's, seems weird.
I don't understand that one either because we don't allow takeout food, but we allow.
So I don't, so is that what they're saying? And they say eating establishments? Because we have restaurants and that's lodging and they have that allowed.
What page are you on?
It's right here.
Yeah, I wish Scott were here because he would maybe know more of what they're going for. But we definitely permit restaurants. So why don't I at least highlight that and say, we don't understand, we permit restaurants.
What's the definition of an eating establishment?
Right.
It talks about shared parking provisions. I mean, a lot of these things, I think it's kind of like they, they wrote this stuff without ever coming into the town. Like it doesn't apply to Jackson, like.
Obviously from away.
Food trucks?
Love them.
I do too.
Hot dog.
Well, maybe, why don't we delay this until next month, when Scott might be here? But in the interview, you might just look it over and see if you have any ideas.
Hmm, sure.
This report is in draft form now and it will be distributed publicly in September is the plan I believe.
It says like allow farm stands to sell goods not produced on site. We already basically allowed that.
Yeah, we have the.
Yeah.
Farmers market, Saturday all summer.
Now, are these people still around? Are they gonna come in? Are they gonna talk to the planning board? Are they gonna talk to the Selectmen? Are they gonna? They're just gonna make these decisions on their own?
Well, there are no decisions. I mean, they are.
This is, this is recommendations.
Well, they are. Everything they do is a decision.
Yeah, but that has no, they have no authority in regulations.
We have all the authority.
Recommendations, suggestions.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Well, I just wonder if they were sending dialogue with them.
Right.
You know, are they?
Well, you said they were gonna have like an open meeting for all the planning boards at some point.
Yeah, like public meetings.
Okay.
I'm just bouncing, bouncing around here, Betsy, for a second and going back to your map here, talking about Tara Bamford and talking about next year. I think, I remember we discussed, you know, those businesses that are non-conforming that are existing. And I just don't, I think it's such a difficult thing to wrap your arms around, to make them conforming.
Well, I don't know if making things conforming should be our major goal. But we should consider what it is we want. You know, do we want to have the village district go all the way up route sixteen, even through some of the areas that are really not very developable? Or do we want to set up a, a district that really is developable if there's enough land, which is not much of? It's just something to consider.
Well, I was just saying, dressing, you were saying about non-conforming businesses. Is that what you're, that's what you're saying?
Well, that's one of the things to consider, you know, if we are going to be redesigning our zoning ordinance or proposing that it be redesigned in some way. Do we want to, you know, one of the things Tara talked about, I think, was having a, a village district and a rural commercial district that could go up route sixteen and having a.
Or it is commercial.
Right, but we're labeled village district and it's not a village. It's just, it's rural, commercial, maybe, or rural something. And then a rural residential and maybe rural mixed use or I don't know what label we might have, but. So that we'd allow, we'd have maybe four districts instead of just two. Just something to discuss to see if we are happy with what we have or if we want to change it the way Tara was proposing that we might consider.
I think we had on the survey a question about whether we wanted to, whether anyone was interested in expanding the number of areas that businesses are allowed. And I don't think there was very much.
Wasn't a lot of positive feedback on it?
No.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go. The, the way it's set up now is pretty straightforward and easy to understand and to follow.
It's there.
Yeah, well, I'm saying it's.
Right, five hundred feet to the side of Route sixteen. Village.
Yeah, people bought land and Route sixteen is commercial, that's, you're devaluing when they talk to them and they say, oh.
That's one of the things I'm gonna tell the ship is that they are in a commercial zone, so if they want to.
I just think it becomes very complicated. You have all these like, you know, different areas and rules. We, I think it's pretty straightforward now what it is. And there's not like there's people coming and there's demand or asking to develop businesses then. Because of where it's located, it's not allowed. Maybe putting a cart before you, a horse, but.
Well, I think that's why it got shut down so many times. I mean, there was in the past quite a push to rezone Route sixteen corridor.
Right.
There was quite a pushback.
Well, and the, I think the reason was the confusion because it came through as not recommended by the planning board.
But Betsy, if you're going to land there for fifty or sixty years, I can then, oh, too bad, well, you're gonna be residential now.
Well, that's the same way.
Devalued your land.
That's the same way when in seventy-one or whatever, seventy-three, the zoning ordinance got put into place, you know.
Well, I'm sorry. I think that's wrong. I'm gonna devalue your land. I'm sorry.
Well, no, it, it isn't that it's right or wrong. I understand people voting their pocketbook on that issue.
Well, yeah.
And they would like to protect their investment.
Sure.
But nobody ever said that real estate was a sure thing. Nobody ever guaranteed you're gonna make money out of it.
Well, I think more importantly, we sent out the questionnaire and the survey, no one really, there wasn't a consensus saying they wanted to look at changing it. That's what we're talking about.
Nope.
Yeah, that's.
They didn't?
No, it's been tried.
That's what I said, it was quite a pushback.
Yeah.
It's tried, it's been tried.
To not change it.
Several times.
Yeah, I think we did hash it out enough that we got a real. Because I remember one time it was all, the people didn't know what they were voting for. People knew what they were voting for. And they voted it down. Okay. For further study?
Sure, let's discuss it when hopefully Scott will be here.
Well, if he's attended the meetings, he'd be a good source to.
Absolutely.
Seven fifty, progress on background ports.
Wow.
We are right.
You're a man, you're good.
You're a machine.
I have a vested interest. I haven't eaten something.
Background ports, I went quick through the table of contents of the last master plan and people have sent me history, report, natural resources is done. John's administrative facilities down through solid waste is done, cemeteries are done, health services. So I, Betsy is still working on population and housing. And Betsy, I also have you down with the library and social services.
No, I wasn't doing library, I think.
Well, that's what it was in the minutes from March media it was, that's all.
Right when you had your back term. Oh, that's right. And you had the vice chairman when you got, when you weren't here to accept your.
Yeah, I was surprised to read those minutes. Thought we were gonna have nominating committee like we usually do and all of a sudden.
Okay, so Scott was taking over the cemeteries and I think library and social service, he was doing cemeteries and health services.
Yeah, those, he's done and sent to me.
Okay, so I'm not sure about library. I'll check on that.
So Betsy will update sections on population, housing, cemetery, library, social service, all services. Okay, and Darren offered to work on employment and income section. How's it going?
I've gotta work on that.
Excellent answer.
Thank you.
Excellent. I like the way you did that.
And Kathleen?
I did do some of the work on the employment. I've got a fair amount of that set, but one of the things I wanted us to consider is in prior years, we've put down information about the sales prices of housing units. I don't know if it's just that we've had so much more real estate happening, but it's just huge. I, I used my camera to take photograph after photograph of the pages of information on land transactions from two thousand two to two thousand fourteen. And I just think it is not productive to be listing all of that sort of information. And so I, I went through to see what other towns do and they don't list, you know, the individual sales.
Yeah, because it's in the end of reports.
Yeah, I just, it makes so much more sense to end up with some analyses. You know, Freedom, for example, talks about rental affordability, sort of average, or the number of permits, building permits sent out. And the town of Carroll, is this Carroll? Let's see, where is Carroll? Yeah, no, that's not it. Oh, the town of Carroll is actually just in the process of redoing their master plan. So it's interesting to see what they're coming up with compared to what we're doing. But, you know, they have this sort of chart about purchase prices of homes and rentals of homes. And I think that kind of thing is more useful.
Or like that?
Yeah.
Of course, I'm kind of favorable to graphs.
Well, here in this report, it says they just list the median value of the home in nineteen ninety.
Yeah.
And then two thousand, you have point A and point B.
Right, very basic.
This one's year to year.
So you'll have to pull your hair out though. You like the graphs. I like the summary.
Some of them are really well done, some of the master plans. This is one for a town of Fitzwilliam, which is kind of the same size as Jackson's, pretty similar.
But that is really extensive. You sent me the link on that.
Yeah.
So how is the medium value, median value established?
Median? You can take all your whole seven.
Yeah, okay.
The one in the middle.
Perfect.
Average is adding them all up and dividing it on.
Right.
If there's a hundred sales.
Yeah. No, the same, my question was, it was based on the assessment. That was what I was, I was gonna say, my question was the source. So it's based on the assessment? That's where we're using it?
I would admit, well, it could be on sales.
That's what I was, what I was wondering.
Yeah, probably on sales makes more sense.
I don't know what the title of the graph is, or assessment.
That's what I was trying, I mean, I know what median is, I'm saying is, do you use the source of the sales of real estate that occurred?
I would imagine.
We're, I'm looking at median household.
Here's another one. You, you understand what I'm saying is that the value of not an assessment, but of a sale that occurred that year is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have age of homes, that's interesting. Thirty-three percent of the homes were made between nineteen, before nineteen forty. That's interesting. Respect your fire department, I would think.
So I would think that in the prior report, they used real estate transactions, right?
Right.
So then, so then, I guess as a group, we need to figure out as going forward, are we gonna use sales to use, if we chose. are we going to use sales to use, if we chose to use the median value? Or is, I think that is more accurate than an assessment.
Right.
Assessments have to be based on comps, though, so they have comparative values of what has sold in the neighborhood.
Right.
And that's how they, that's part of the formula.
Right.
See, I guess the question is, though, what is, which, what are we going to use then?
What we probably... Also, the sale price, it limits the number of, if we do assessed value of houses. You're across the community. If you're...
I guess it's all how you phrase it.
Sales, you're only a part of the community.
Right.
Right.
And also, you could have hardship sales too, that would throw the hole. If you only have ten sales.
Well, I guess it's all how you phrase it, is this is the median price of the real estate sold, this is the median value of the assessed.
Yeah, but if you only have five sales.
I understand that. I'm just saying is, we have to choose...
Right. I don't think sales would be appropriate because we may not have any sales in a given year, you know, potentially.
Well, assessed value is supposed to be all based on the same scale, isn't it?
Yeah, but I bet you, you know, if you're, because of the area, we'd probably get more for a house than what it's assessed at, I would think. In some areas, you probably wouldn't.
You're saying that we're, valuation is below like eighty percent or something.
Right. I mean, I don't know what you, what did they say in there what they used? Yeah, this is purchase price. This one's rental.
Somebody who purchased their house in nineteen seventy, they pay a different amount.
But that's...
Right. I mean, if I bought my house from my relatives for twenty thousand dollars, that would be really accurate, you know, for my house.
Yeah, but I think you have to use sales.
Right, it should be based on our transaction.
And then the question would be, is, do you want to just do point A to point B? Do you want to, I don't think we should list every transaction. Like, is the annual report listed each year?
Right, I think coming up with a graph would be helpful.